All right, so it is 6:03 PM by my watch. We'd like to open up the special meeting of the Woodbury Select Board. The first thing on the agenda is calling the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to call the meeting to order? Or was the favor?
Aye.
All right. So, let's do some introductions. I'll start. Hi, my name is Chris Codius. I'm the Chair of the Woodbury Select Board.
Diana Peducey, Woodbury Select Board, member of EDI. Liz?
Lizzy Higgins, Woodbury Select Board.
Okay, Tyler Meyer. I have a camp on Nichols Pond Dam Road. Also a member of EDI. Nick Meyer or Nichols Meyer on the Woodbury and Nichols Pond.
Andrew Meyer from Hartmut, but also a member of EDI. Woods property in Woodbury.
Yeah, we should be very high.
From that camp on the Woodbury.
Robin Durk, Woodbury Town Clerk.
He got it.
Great. So, the purpose of this meeting is to have a discussion of the Nichols Pond Dam Road, Town Highway 13. And the focus of the discussion is to understand whether or not it is a town road or a private road. And how we move forward with what seems like a discrepancy at this point.
I'm sorry, you said what?
Someone of a discrepancy at this point.
Well, this sort of started back in the fall when the Select Board got an email with a picture of a gate that we hadn't seen before. And so, yeah, from the...
The problem.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. And he said, "Well, this new gate, what's up?" I thought this was a private road. And so, we put it on the agenda to talk about whether or not, how to address it. And somebody saw it on the agenda and it all showed up. So, we talked about it at some length at that time, but we all went away to try to come up with some more evidence and some more answers.
You were referencing the gates at the top. Is that correct?
There's one there.
Well, I had a question about it halfway down when I shut up. I didn't know, but it was kind of, I closed and then I started to talk. And then I looked, I came down, I looked on the Internet and it had the town roadmap instead of the classified road. It's going on, so I thought, just town road, ask the town Select Board about it.
Has something changed since it was designated as a private road?
I'm sorry?
Has the Select Board changed their view of whether it was designated a private road? The sign was put up in 2000...
1998.
Yeah, I didn't find any evidence that that... I mean, to change the status of a road involves a whole process. And I haven't seen, been able to find or shown any evidence that that was actually done. We have a map from 2000, 2001, 1006, no, 1916 that shows the, when the old road was thrown up and the new road was put in place. And ever since then, all these ten, all these years, all these highway maps from V-Train show that it's a class three, class four town road. So, if it changed, if some previous Select Board just said, "Okay," and they didn't go through the paperwork, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, Norm was around, but in 1998, John Meyer, who was the EDI, went to the town Select Board and had a talk to them. And it was designated as a PBT, the sign now. And the sign disappears every now and then, stealing it.
Yeah, it's gone again.
Sometimes we find the pieces out.
Oh gracious.
I looked around, I didn't really look too far into the woods, but I noticed...
The sign was not correct. Correct. It was put up, it was in there.
Yeah, so it, you know, I just, personally, I think it's an asset that the public's been using for a long time. I'm sorry that there's sometimes discrimination, people using that property by the dam, but...
One of the things, so in 1998, the PBT sign goes up, but Norm did that in, I think, 2006, because of the camp owners, because of the vandalism issues down the Indian Missouseto, they got together, went to the Select Board. In 2008, the Select Board, I got it, it was October 9th, 2006. The Select Board talent tells the camp owners, "It's a problem, Select Board, and there's not much they can do about it." A good idea would be to gate the road and give a key to the Police Department, Fire Department, and Electric Department. So, we're dealing with these issues right after the 80s and 90s and 2006. So, they also tell them to have curfews through the lake association. And then, of course, in 2007, the dam goes, and there's an issue with the dam. So, everything's focused, the lake is drained. And then the coma, the association and Heartwood Electric raised money, mainly by the association, to redo the dam, which is done in, what, 2008, around the border? But, so, at the same time, they talk about this issue, you know, people going down there and just using, even though there's signs carrying the area out, you know, don't do fires, don't camp, private property, EDI, Heartwood Electric, associations on the sign. This has been going on forever. And so, one of the issues with the gates was sort of how can we control the people who don't follow the signs, rules on private property? So, these gates were used, never locked, were used, put up. And I think the middle gate, because when they finished the dam, in 2011, there was never had, but it was a huge underage drinking party for graduation, state police came and busted it. And at that point, some of the camp owners who were closest to the dam had knocked it. That's when it was, I think, a vote by the association to put up the red gate. And it was going to not to lock, keep it unlocked, but to put the gate up, just sort of some sort...
Has it been, has it been closed?
Closed, meaning the gate?
Yeah.
There was signs, there was a curfew, and some camp owners would go, EPM, close the gate. It says, but also the red one was supposed to be on top, but because of the snowmobile trail, they put it in there.
So, how many gates are there? There's a red one in?
It was just the red one, but the top gates, because in 2022, Icefish was open up there, Nichols Pond, first time. So, all of a sudden, took the winter of 2002, all these people are going down that road to the red gate, it's closed in the winter, it's not blocked, and Jam ended up getting stuck. You know, people would then try to go to the pond of private property. So, actually, the association, I think, went to the fishing game, petitioned to have Nichols Pond taken off the Icefish list because of the habitat and the danger of the pond with springs, et cetera, and do a little of private property.
And did that happen?
It went to the board and they said, "No, it's open for us."
You know, there's no access, basically.
Right, right. And they said, "No, they can go over your property to fish unless you post it." So, they told, I think something, they posted property, Wickham, Kirkmore. So, we were told, "You don't want to cross your property with the chantees or the Icefish posted." So, some people did. And so, the gates were put on top to protect the road, keep everybody up top. And then signs were put up, saying camp owners own this road close to the sea. And signs were put to the old ancient road, people could go down that way and get to the...
Do you think?
Yes.
I mean, it's a long walk.
But a lot of people snowmobile.
Yeah.
Because there's, again, signs that would go down the strip or two. But that one had to be on too. How's that anything else? Because those are on Wickham property, click me in, they're private. We're not sure.
I understand people just got a small...
Well, it was not locked, it was not locked.
They didn't have a sign on it also saying, "No..."
No ATBs.
No ATBs. Oh, just ATBs.
But most people used cold sleds from that point down.
Were there snowmobiles?
Mostly, some snowmobiles blocked.
They walked? They did both pull their sleds, wow.
For a few camp owners, they had issues because there was one spot where somebody was going across with snowmobiles and chantees, and they didn't want that. So, they said, "No trespass," and then, so, move everybody up top. Because we did, two people did get stuck in the winter, you know, because of shoot.
My memory of that first year of opening Icefishing is that it was plowed right down to one of your property.
Yeah, and then you're right in the plow.
And so, people would go right down there and get the plow. Plow, go to plow end, and then there are huge lump in the road that couldn't go further. And then they'd look left and see the lake right there and have to shoot over.
Right.
So, under that, but to be part of the solution also would be to, either not push the snow on the middle of the road, or not plow, they could camp, or they can look right across at the lake.
Yeah, this year wasn't enough. And it saved the road considerably in the spring, because no one went down there in March or April, because the association maintains it, I believe. The height of the drought was estimated by the route of the association. And this year was probably the best, because no one drove down in March or April.
And the alternative was not to keep people from accessing the pond for fishing, but provide a better route that wouldn't alter people's private property. And what's the problem here is that more people on the road, as I said, creates more havoc on the condition of the road. So, if you wanted to fish at Nichols Pond, you still have the opportunity to do by accessing it over public land. And even if the road were public, you'd still have to go over private property to get to the pond, which, which, you know, could be, so if the landlords wanted to prevent ice fishing, they could post it. But as the intent for, since, what, 70 years, it's never been to keep the public from accessing. It's been having controlled access points so that it's safe, but also controlled so that if issues do arise, we are able to address it by stopping access, which we don't. I don't think anyone in this room has had a problem or has not been able to access the lake or the pond ever.
Yeah, I can't really picture, well, if somebody came down that back road, how they would actually get to the water.
Meaning the old ancient road?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a trail. And it comes out, it doesn't fall over, and then you're right there.
But how do they get in the water? They just jump?
With ice fishing, yeah, they just...
They'll go either side of the dam.
Oh, okay.
Usually the left side of the dam or at the dam.
But there is actually a lot of gate there because there's the cable, so they have to...
There's a cable, right?
Through the gate, the sign.
The cable, remove the cable and put stones so people could maneuver through the stones.
But in the winter, they, there's snowmobile trails, they would ride over, it's like they're a little tense up.
Does the snowmobile trail go across the...
Snowmobile trail, they've changed, right, to the ancient road, underneath the power line, to...
On Wickham.
Wickham's.
Pops out back at Nichols Pond.
The power line, it's left from...
It's like 200 meters away.
100, yeah.
Before the dam, in the dam ring.
So, if it's, to say it's a public road, let's say you already mentioned, the private property that half people would have to go across could be disputed property, that's disputed rent name, is that right, Heartwood Electric? Say they own property and...
Not just, it's disputed.
Right, some people say it's disputed, isn't it?
It's not a conversation that we're into.
No, I'm just trying to say, there's some land that's under dispute where people would go into the water. So, just like saying, it's on private property, it is on, under dispute.
Yeah, the survey plan that we have from 2016 shows the new road ending right at the property line.
Yeah, yes.
The state maps are all over the, I mean, the state, state maps have the glass road going off into the woods.
Yeah, it's not terribly reliable.
And there are state maps that show that only ancient roads still is a road years after it was discontinued. And there are references to numbers of roads, like 14 is different places at different times. So, if you can imagine someone sitting in an office in Mont Hiller looking at unfinished road maps and trying to align, without a lot of information to do that, I think that's where you see some of the discrepancies of state maps that show. And we're not the only one, private, private roads that are classified as public based on a state map.
The gates and the road is all about, even after 2016, they built a Select Board about vandalism, where people down at the dam, you know, doing shooting guns, you know, and the road now, people driving fast at night. I mean, we don't want to get into stories, top 10 stories, but finding a road, it's not pleasant.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm stuck, so...
I mean, the gate boards have to be out there more often.
Yeah. So, when the dam was rebuilt, the contractor used that road for all their equipment? Wow.
Yeah. So, the dam was built in 1906, and that road, the old ancient road, the road was to build, they were commissioned in that dam in 1906. And then in 1916, it was, it was closed. And you know, if, a lot of people are referring to, you know, the 1916 discontinuance of the old road and the new right of way.
Proposed, proposed right of way.
And we, you know, I think that's, this document, you know, has, has good things laid out, but also has a lot of interpretation to it. And you know, the, as it shows, the proposed right of way to the granite company property over the Ashley property, which basically, as it stated here, Ashley is petitioning the Select Board with five other landowners to basically request that they, they discontinue the whole road and substitute a right of way to there. It's implied that it could be for the public, but it also could be so that these five property owners could then have access through the Ashley property. So, Ashley was only able to give rights on things that he had, which was on his own property. So, that's why, you see, it designates the only two camps that were currently existing were the James and Jennings. So, in theory, Ashley, in exchanging to throw out the old road, basically provided right of way for these two camp owners, another landowners that were aligned there, which were part of petition, which was the granite company of the road, Clark, that also had a property provided, and then there's one other property owner that was on that end. You know, interpreting as they threw a role of provide access for these landowners on a proposed right of way. And then the question that we have an answer to determine is, you know, where exactly that right of way would have been? The road, it's likely, there's no record, so the road continuing beyond the two camp roads, which means this proposed right of way to get there likely not built out. Now, in 38...
You're saying the proposed right of way on this map was not the road that's there now?
Uh, I don't know, the proof is there.
There's no proof that was ever actually put in.
It references a fence itself.
It references a fence that is no longer there. I don't think the road was ever actually established.
Right, yeah. So, Diana, where we are looking, where it might make the most sense in this is that Lloyd D., the people who bought the granite company, had properties for the timber rights, was doing the law job after the 38 hurricane period. And bulldozed from the dam where he was going with logs, bulldozed that section of the road so he could access his logs up to the top. So, it's very likely that that, which at that time, 1938, would have been the time that that road would have connected to the dam, so, for logging purposes. So, it's, and it references that this right of way road was unfit, but to be developed. And you know, as you look at this, I think it's actually pretty interesting to read about these old road issues, but what, what was the next phase if it were to be developed? Where it was laid out and it actually was laid out? And was it the intent of the, this petition from Ashley to have a public road or to provide private access for those landlords, as it reads? So, one, was it, was it an exchange for public access to where? Or was it an exchange for access for these landowners who were, who had the access, who had the opportunities in the old road to substitute for their right of way to get to their property through Ashley? Because this was all private landowners who were part of this petition, petitioning. There was no public entity, person represented in the petition to throw up the old road. So, if you interpret it that way, then this old road was thrown up to give access for these properties, which it outlines, as you see, the two Jennings and the James, the only camps that were existing at that time.
Well, this little spur road that goes down to those two camps is still there and has shown on all the other maps since then. But in order to get there, I mean, this proposed plan from 1914, though, shows this new right of way going all the way down to the property line. And it was proposed because it didn't actually take place until 2016. But when he wrote this plan in 2014, it was still proposed, although it does say somewhere in here that it needs to be built. Needs to be built.
It looks to me like this is between the, that people can select, which would provide that with the town, that was a state law, so if it's a town road, it would generally just be people, the town use.
For the purposes of public access to where.
I don't know, it doesn't really matter, it's a town road, it could be that, or whatever.
Yeah, and then, and so, I think, I think that's kind of where the balance in this equation is, is right now, to control access, controlled access, the landowners are providing access to the pond for public, for the public access. And it's, and it's done in a way to help control the safety, and then also control those who are not in alignment with the peaceful uses of the, of the pond and the area and the camps that are, that are around it. So, it seems to be, the situation that we have had for seven years seems to be working as far as the public being able to get to the pond. What's the challenge is, is when they get there, how they behave and the uses that they do, which creates the conflict that we have. So, the gates, in concert with the Heartwood Electric, with the camp owners and with the Select Board over here, says then, let's mitigate, try to mitigate the issues of the use that's not, that's outside the bounds of, like, a peaceful use of what you'd expect someone to do. So, to do that, it's, let's, let's put gates up, let's help control the flow, let's restrict the timeframes on it, which is from 5:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. And that impacts the road, but it essentially impacts where you end up on that road, which is property that is managed by Heartwood Electric and EDI. So, the timeframes in which you do is really using the road or not, when you get there, those are the hours in which we're putting on to help control that, that use. So, the gates have been there for, one, to be able to protect that which are not locked and never have been locked, but also importantly is to help prevent, as Taylor mentioned, access on the road during the light seasons, during times that it's causing damage to the road, that the landowners, the camp owners have been maintaining and improving and having put money in each year. So, and the idea of, as Taylor mentioned, the gate at the top was really to address that mud access, that access during those off-seasons, which, which are others. You'll find out if you go up, the gates are open. The gates are open with signs that basically access.
Well, but that kind of controlled access can also happen on a town road, a class four road.
You'd have to go to the Select Board every time.
Well, you know, you could be, get an agreement of what the restrictions are going to be, and then if you want to change it in a few years, yeah, you'd have to come back. But it's, I mean, it's laid out in the town, you know, in the state law, but... So, the town can grant permission to enclose pent roads and trails by the owner of the land during any part of the year by erecting stiles, unlocked gates, and bars in the places designated, and to make regulations governing the use of pent roads and trails, and to establish penalties not to exceed $50. This must have been written a while ago. You know, and it is, it is possible to still have it be a town road and have controls.
And I think, you know, we also, you know, talked about trying to provide alternatives to access that may get safer and easier, that also can be controlled. But I think, you know, I guess the question too, where, what do you do when you get to the end of that town road? Is there a place to park? No. Is there a place to turn around? No. So, I think, you know, how, how, when we put it all together and try to look at what, you know, everybody's interest is in all this thing, how do we kind of figure out, okay, the intent is for, you know, a heartwood resident to come down and access the pond, which you've been able to do for your life? And, and no one has been denied access to that, but in a controlled way. So, in the bigger scheme of things, is this the most effective way to try to do that that allows that access? Or does it become a public road, which would be controlled, would be maintained, monitored by the town, and then it goes to a certain point?
A class four road wouldn't necessarily be maintained, but it could, could be done.
Okay, so, it's not maintained?
Well, I mean, last year, we spent our whole class four budget on that section of Nichols Pond Road between this road and the Heartwood Town Line. So, but every year, we do have money to do repairs on class four roads.
We appreciate that work you did on it. So, I think the big idea is what, where, where, what's the, what's the best, what's the, what's the best outcome, what's the town's interest in? We've got one person from Hartmut petitioning the town of Woodbury, or asking about this, is this a, is this a Woodbury issue that will become part of Woodbury concern, or is this...
No, I think it's a Woodbury issue. I mean, it's, it's, as far as I'm concerned, it's an asset that's, that has been on the town road maps for probably 100 years, not more, maybe a little less. But the town shouldn't get, the town giving it up is just giving up on access. I understand, totally understand why you would all love to have a private road. I think you can get what you want, still have it be the town road.
I guess the question is, is the town going to get what they want with a public road?
Well, the town does...
If you did a public road, what would be the hope for that public road? To get to where?
To get to the water again.
But you can't get to the water with a public, with your public road.
Your, 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 to pull that, I mentioned to you, and that you is under dispute if they, if they exist that a public road is posted, what's that a problem?
There's no dispute.
There is no dispute of what, where is dispute. Where is dispute, in those rights that you have on that piece of property that is posted. But if, if that were the case, then we, this road, there's some songs in the river about where these roads, where, where does this road go? And I'm sure Norm knows them all by heart, but this, where, where is the road at the end of the day? If it's a public road, where is the road going?
What happens at the, at the current property line? I'm not sure on the ground really where it is. Is it just open up?
Your curtain ward was just the last key.
What?
Before the last key, that's where, before their key.
It's before, before the parting area when you, when you get to the town. That's where, if you're following this philosophy of this right of way, this right of way takes over the Ashley property to a point, which is to the old Woodbury Granite property.
And so, you're saying that whoever, whether it's you or Heartwood Electric, that...
Right, the Lord as well.
Right, the curtain door as well, you have to go, you have to go through the curtain door, piece of property as well.
Who's that?
The curtain door, they, that was, he'd hired a guy to let him have it, he sold it, all the rights, the curtain door.
So it's not, I mean, we're not, it's not a threat to be able to say, oh, if you do this, we're going to close it. But if we look at as a private landlord, what our means are to protect our property, it would be, if that's, if that is our next right to post our property, then we could post where the right-of-way ends. And that's our, that would be, right now, we protect our rights by having limitations on the times that people can go.
Access it.
We could still continue to keep those times, we could still continue to, if it is a public road, you know, we, at the end of the day, we're majorly concerned about safety on that road, the use of the road, the conditions of the road, all things that we're trying to take, or we have, we assume are our responsibility as, as a private, as private landowners to protect this private road, while still getting access to the dam. So if, at the end of the day, you designate this, or it's confirmed, or reaffirmed, or gone through a process to become a public road, you know, we'd still want to work with you on how it's maintained and how it's gated or not, and what happens when you get to the end of the road, which people are going to be parked, turned around and, somebody's parking lot. As, as our way of being able to control the uses of the property within that road.
But they'll still be turned around and someone's parking there.
I get it.
Right. Or park them on the road to get to, or in that's the case, there may not be a way for them to access upon if the landowners are posted.
If it's posted, they can't, not from the end of the road.
So that's where, what we've, what's been working thus far is, we've been, the landlords have been maintaining the road, gating the road in the winter now, and trying to, trying to work with the road to limit the people or limit the access during certain hours. We still, even with that, we still have issues with certain people using it in non-safe ways, shooting guns, fires, other things that make it uncomfortable for many to even be down there. And that's not one thing that we've been talking with, you know, how to strategize and how to help that.
So you think if this was a private road, you'd be able to control that?
Well, as a private road.
But you're saying you don't want to restrict access to the water, but?
You know, just the misuse, and the gates in the private road gives you that leverage of give and take, it's a give and take sort of thing, you know.
Do you, do you guys feel like the gate currently is doing a good enough job of protecting that access and making it safe? Or do you feel like it's, you know, there's still issues that you'd want to take further steps to solve?
It's better, than, I think, Norm would agree, it's better than the past, you're correct, the names.
Well, there's some issues, I, you know, well, there's a couple things to comment on, I guess. One is, oh, back in the mid-'80s, you started a conservation commission in the town. Come to my house and touch that project. And we did survey the town back then, and set a service incentive. You know, a key, key issue right along, one of the most important things that people in town felt was public access to water. And here's a case where there is public access to water. And nothing, nothing has been mentioned here so far, is talk about trying to deny that. But that's a big problem, you know, when you create the access to water, you also create potential problems. And that's, there's been a lot of problems there, because that, you know, it's been known over the years as, not from many iterations, but it's been known as a police-free zone, I'm saying, with all kinds of things happening down by the dam, that shouldn't be any, no enforcement, except for that one, state police intervention, that you mentioned, and lost some of that reputation at that point. But the, but because the town is interested in that, and right this way, of course, it's an important thing for the town, what should be done about making sure the right thing happens when there is public access? And that's, that's really what this whole discussion is about. It isn't about, you know, no one's looking to deny access, they're trying to make it work for families and people that use it, and there's a lot of people that use it correctly, and who do understand a bit, so. How do we go about that? I think, you know, the legalities, these issues get very muddled when you get, when you really dig down deep into it, there's, oh, you can fight about this stuff forever if you want to pull a legal route. The question is, what makes the most sense? And how can, how can, how can we make things work better? So the, so what's been going on with the gating was one method that was put in place to try to, try to leave any small comments, but it only went so far because there's still no enforcement. And it's difficult for, we have some places, we want to know this one time, and I might once the mind have to actually go to the dam and lay down some law. But the, but they need more than that, they need some, you know, some more attention for that. So that's a difficult question for the town, really. And I know you're always rapping on, please enforcement it now. But that's an example where something needs to happen. People have spoiled there and live there, down by the dam. And that's bad in and of itself, but also because that tends to dampen down use by others because it's difficult to access the dam when you're living down like that. So how do we go about making this right? That's really what, what I see as the issue. And that's what, that's what they're trying to do with making that alternative route and by doing the gating and so forth. So I think it's a question of, you know, as you were saying, you know, glad we figured out how to try to solve some of those problems. That's what I see as the essence of the issue.
I was really shocked to find, to hear from Norman that somebody's been squatting there for like two summers. And I told that to Mike Sullivan, and he went right down and told him the lead. But yeah, I can't believe that.
Norm, as a landowner, do you feel like the new gate that's closer to the top of the road, do you feel like it's been helpful so far as a property owner who's, you know, has an interest?
Yeah, I think I guess, I think it's been beneficial. But only when, when certain camp owners made sure that it was enforced to some degree. Otherwise, people ignore it from that side.
Do you mean by closing the gate? Like when people come and close it at a certain time, that was helpful?
Yeah, that's part of it, you know, for those things, you know, the honest people would respect both laws and not that people could care less. You get all, all responses like that, you know.
But the gates have been left open in the summer, right?
Right along the road. Part of the gates too, is just a presence and awareness. When you go through a gate, there's an awareness when there's a sign that says, "Respect property." That's one of the hopes, is that people coming down can see that. And again, it's the, the people who enjoy the pond and are respectful, use it, use it, enjoy it, but that's not everybody. And that's kind of where the struggle comes in, is when those who are not, you know, treating the area which they treat, you're respecting others who are either there or living there, it gets dangerous. So the gates, I think, are two-fold one. It's really in the winter to, and they weren't locked in the winter, but they were present there, which kept most people from driving down. And if you can prevent them from driving down and provide an alternative access, signage, ice fishing this way, where they had, those who were present and wanted to get to the pond still could follow those things. So the intent wasn't to shut it down to the people, to the thing, we made an alternative route for them to get there.
But it's not, like, you don't, I mean, do you plow it in the winter?
It's a trail.
It's the old VD road now.
No, I mean, the road, the main camp road now.
It's been plowed by pedestrians, it wasn't plowed last year.
Has anybody complained about the gate? Like, I know there's been questions about it, but have there been actual complaints? I mean, it doesn't, to me, it seems like a pretty reasonable solution.
There's been questions, questions about the gate, but we haven't heard any, we haven't regularly heard complaints of people not being able to do what they've usually done.
We have a plotback intervention in the sign. I was just saying, a plotback intervention on the sign, I think there's Hardwood Electric, he hired the Nichols Pond Association on the use of the, of the water.
Yeah, and communication is one of the most important parts to do, but that's, those are kind of things that the feedback we get is, you know, who you call? If you have a question or a transfer. And that's, you know, those are, besides Norm's phone number, no, we haven't, but if someone has a question, usually if someone takes the time to ask the question, whatever their purpose or what their intent was or what they wanted, usually the needs, we can meet, that need is met or resolved. And in this case, if a fisherman came to the gate and saw the gate closed, he would see signs that say, "Ice fishing that way," and could follow that to get down there. If you're a mudbogger and you're coming in the spring to look for mud, the gate is closed for a purpose during that season. They can still get through, and they could, because it's not locked, but hopefully that's enough deterrence for them not to do it. Or in this case, if we have closed the dam area from 5:00, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m., you know, do we, is it better to put the sign at the top of the road and say, "Closed," or at the bottom? And that's kind of the, the idea of having the gate at the, now at the top with signage, but come between 8:00 and, or 5:00 a.m. a day, you've got direct access.
Yeah, well, one other thing is I spoke with the game wardens in the area, and they're kind of, on one hand, they're quite happy with the situation in that there is public access to lake for fishing and broaching and so on, and they don't have to own an access in that region and so on. But what he mentioned to me was, if there was a local ordinance in place that what goes on out at the dam, I think they'd enforce it. So, and if you're willing to do that. Now, of course, game wardens change, and I'm not sure if that's the right policy, or it might be a meeting with them to do that, but. So there might be an opportunity either for the town to do an ordinance that pretty much says what the sign said.
What would the ordinance say, no trespassing on private property, or?
Well, no access from 5:00, from 8:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
Basically, yeah, I mean, you just mentioned that, you know, of course, set up as a pent road, that the select board could make rules and there'd be a fine involved for disavowing them, or if the town has an ordinance on the use of that area, it could be forced to be by the town or by your fishing game, fishing wildlife.
You think they'd go out there at 8:00 and 9:00 o'clock at night and break up a party?
I don't think, the game wardens' condition, game wardens can check licenses if you're in armed and wildlife, like fire, who set fire to that property?
Get you for that.
It's the other, turn the back corner.
They, they don't come up here. We've been fighting with this for a while.
Yeah, they tried to get this, yeah, yeah.
Some of these are all possibilities, you know, to try to, try to deal with it.
Did you talk to the fishing game at one point?
Yeah, they, as when this ice fishing came up, fishing game, we met the fishing game, we kind of talked about, how do we, how do we help the public access this lake without disturbing or going over private property? And with private landowners who surround the pond, what are ways that we could work with them to help that? And they were open, they were open, we had good discussions, and our alternative, as we talked to them about, was create a path that was not on the sort of bordering the camps, so they could still get to the, but they're, they're open, they're, they want, they want people to fish. There are, I mean, with that, there also comes the issues of those who don't, you know, aren't good stewards of fishing with garbage and whatnot. But that's also the hope of having more awareness, more communication, and more perceived, perceived regulation on access also helps put attention to curb those who are not going to behave on that property or disrupt it. So the, and further, there's, you know, and then collateral, I think, what's the best way we can try to help the most interests that are there, which are those public members who want to access Nichols Pond? What are some creative, collaborative ways we can all work together to help make that, make that happen? Which could potentially be other, other access points, other roads that could still get people close to the water so they could access it. But amid that, regardless, would have to be, you know, expectations of use, regardless of private, public, those expectations and regulations. Because you shouldn't, I don't think we want to be here just reacting to those who don't treat the property well, the lake wells, it's for those who want, you know, access it in a way that's respectful. Because if we start to make the rules just for the other, we're, we're going to push out those who, who.
Who are being respectful.
Who are being respectful, who want to use it in a certain way.
Yeah, and if we wrote some kind of an ordinance, it would have to apply everywhere. And that would be a thinking, you know.
Well, I think, you know, for that matter, I'd say, you know, the last couple of years, some things have improved, you know, people, you know, people make problems down there and other people clean up problems, you know, so. Because a lot of people really enjoy using the pond, and they go there and they, the last, I typically go down to the dam earlier and clean up whatever mess there is on the green up there and so on. The last two years, people have already done it. I found a bag roll right there, that's one of my problems, you know, last. So it goes both ways, most people do respect it and do the right thing, but then there are those that don't, and how do you deal with it?
Yeah, I don't think you deal with it, whether or not it's a town road though.
It seems, it doesn't seem we're going to solve that, just from, you know, the reading of the material that we have on the issue and from our lawyers, it seems to me that the only way to really solve whether it's a town road or not is to hire someone, and I don't know that we want to.
What he said was that if we decide to go further and litigate this, we should get a surveyor rather than depend on an attorney, because attorneys don't do facts, they rely on fact witnesses. But I don't think we need to do that. He also thought that because, well, the evidence that I showed him, which was this old thing and the state records and the, you know, just the right that the public has for using and access for so many years, that we'd have a good case, but it would be preferable to just work things out rather than litigating, yeah.
So what I don't quite understand is what do, what needs to be worked out? Like, the gate, I'm hearing, it makes really good sense to me. It sounds like it's at least been somewhat helpful. I'm not hearing that there have been complaints about it, so, I mean, it seems like, could we just leave things as they are? Call it good?
If it's, if you just do what you're doing and not insist that it's a private road.
One of those using light, I mean, too, if you're, unless on this public road, that means that you're opening up all the rest of your Class IV roads. It's like a camp, Nichols, all you have, but the signs in the dress, that's in my hours, in my record. So in some ways, there's a fairness issue across.
I'm sorry.
You're saying, yeah.
Well, I'm saying that if you're applying your discretion differently for this road than for another Class IV road, that could cause a problem in the future if you don't have that in your, you know, like it.
Well, we could do a pent road on any road, any kind, like, last year, we turned the road into a trail, the one that goes from Buck Lake out to Mackville. That was a big process, but there was a consideration of doing it as a pent road, but it's just too long.
No, what I'm saying is that you have a lot of class four roads in town.
Yeah.
And so the question would be, who can put gates on that?
Right.
What rules can be made?
Right.
You know, could just people live nearby with gates over? Can anybody put here for any class four road? Out of town or in town?
One option is, one option that was pointed out was that you could do a class four road policy, which we don't have, that could address whether or not, when people can do a pent road, but clearly the state law allows for individual roads to be considered.
Considered, patented.
I do hear what you're seeing as far as, you know, setting a precedent for other roads, and that would be a really big concern for me because I personally am in support of keeping all of our class four roads open for off-road traffic and, you know, whatever. They're great, fun places for people to enjoy, and I think it's one of the benefits of our town. And the only thing, I guess, that is a little bit different here is that whether it is a class four road or whether it's a private road is up for dispute, and I don't see us, like, having an answer for that, today at least.
Well, you could either fight it or just agree to something.
I mean, somebody doesn't like nobody's disputing that there was bad behavior down there. I've seen it myself, and actually, actually, a little further from the stuff you said, I've been down there since people have been doing bad behavior, which is going to be pinging other people trying to get to the water. So I think that's a real issue, and so I'm not against any measures that we're taking for the private-public things, the real question I ask.
I think all the signs are quite polite, really, because even if they don't apply to the road, all that property on either side is private property.
Correct.
So as once as you step off the road, you're on private property. So that trespassing, but it doesn't have to say no trespassing on the road, which it doesn't.
It doesn't.
And I don't know what it says when the gate is closed.
It doesn't.
It says respect.
It says, respect private access.
And there's nothing on the road that says, "Do not drive on this road". The signs basically say, "Respect to private landowners", and, so if you're going to access it from the Nichols Road to the granite, the old Woodbury Granite property, nothing's really stopping you from doing that except for when the gate is closed seasonally, or sometimes after 8:00 PM, when the dam or you're going to is closed. So, you know, there's, and I think, you know, whether it goes to a public or a private, and we want to take that to a lake or a legal course, that that's one course that could be taken, but I think the end of the day is, you know, what's our goal? What are we not doing now that's causing harm or complaint by someone who's intent wants to get to the water during most times? I haven't seen any, any issue where anybody has been denied to the water at any time, unless it is after certain hours or seasonally.
Yeah, it's working now, whatever you're doing, except for the people who don't have respect, and I don't think, I don't know if gates are going to help that or not.
I think they help.
I'm just worried, yeah, I'm sure they help, but not good.
Does the sign say private property?
Not on the gate.
Not on the gate. No, the sign does say it, simply.
Uh, the sign is, the gate is the one that we're associating park electric and EB hide, which might be a private property.
It doesn't say private property, it just specifies that it's EB hide land.
Yeah, respect, use, but basically it's respect or lose, you know, access. And carry in, carry out, that's kind of the message. It's been like that for years, respect it.
Utilize it? And reduce your access.
I guess that's the main, what's, you've got to have at some point some leverage to keep, you know, this in alignment and to, to build the main purposes of that space.
Is there, would there be any value on the town? Could designate that as a pent road, which could allow for those gates to be there and could allow for the restrictions on use, pretty much as it is now, if the town could do that officially? Assuming that's there, or leaving a site issue one way or the other, and then it would be subject to, subject to the 50 dollar fine and so forth, and or essentially say the same thing, but it would also be the town, right? Doesn't make sense to do that? Would that be helpful?
Good question.
You have to check the community association, I know most of them have that's private road. Road two, Norm's, Norm's one, one cliff, it's very odd, that's private.
So it sounds like we should have a broader discussion with the camp owners. The only advantage, well, there are multiple advantages. If we were to have it as a public road and have, we don't have many enforcement mechanisms, we could do the same things that you're doing now with gates. Also opens us up to being able to use some public funds to maintain the road if that's something that you all want to work with us on, with the town, with, you know, in general. But it does put the onus on us as the town to make sure that our ordinance is enforced. Gives you some leverage that you don't have as a private landowner, but it does take some things out of your hands. And I think that that's really where the discussion needs to go, but it has to, I think it sounds like it really has to come from the entire community in Nichols Pond. You guys have that community.
The, yeah, the camp owner association director is going to be here.
Kurt is, he's a cool guy.
So...
But we have him in here every year, so.
But you're right, they, the camp owners are open to discussion, open to...
It sounds like you guys are...
...solvers and improving the situation overall, so I think...
The nice thing is that we don't have any disagreements, really. We don't want misuse of that land. We want access to it.
But if it's private, then...
In an appropriate way.
Guarantee that it'll remain access.
And I think that...
Remain available.
Dennis' point is what the town's concern is essentially, you know, how do we make sure that we maintain this for perpetuity? Make sure that people do have access to it, and how do we control it? You all have done a wonderful job of making sure that it's better controlled than it was before. Didn't solve everything. I don't know if we can do it better, but I think that this is a discussion that we have to have, and it has to be among all of the camp owners.
They're all going to want a private road.
Which is fine.
But we had talked to you in 2006...
It is fine.
About an alternative to the old, I guess, they did.
Discontinued, right?
They went to the town in 2006 about that too, the dam being done, but it was going to cost too much money, the town would have gone in. And that sort of resurfaced recently, this is now new.
And then, as I sort of, it's a safer access to, to, to allow an access to the pond, which goes over private property. But that's, I think that's in a, in a spirit of what can be done, what can be discussed to make, make a solution that protects the public...
Public good.
Public good, but also the rights of the private landowners, because just because you want something, you like something or want something in your public and it's private, doesn't mean it's, it's, it's public.
No.
Well, I think there's some great examples of public-private partnerships throughout the state that demonstrate that, because the last thing you want, I mean, it's not a threat, but...
We don't want to alienate you all.
Well, no, you're trying to discuss this, it's who...
No, you're...
Just on the property.
For the future.
Future, I guess, and if they're not ready, if you're missing owners, we want to be the owners, but...
And that's our concern as well.
As things change, you want to make sure that, you know, we've demonstrated that.
Good faith.
I think that for 70 years, that's been demonstrated.
Yeah, we don't want to lose that.
Right, so, yeah, this is great to have a discussion, and learn that the issues are out, the concerns that are out there, and it's nice to know that no one is here saying, "Well, I can't get to the pond", that I'm blocked from going to a pond, which I've done for years, but also what are some ways that we can collaborate, discuss that brings the interest of safety, and it's a lot of safety. And when we say safety driving the road, it's like, so they're not, so they're not driving too fast or they're impaired, you know, as they meander through the woods by people's camps, when a lot of people are walking down and whatnot, so... I think everyone's on the same kind of...
I think we all agree in the general interest.
Well, so, park electric own the dam?
Park electric, they own the, the concrete and the water, it's on the dam.
Okay, but they don't own that nice little lawn right behind it? Or do they?
Well, they, if it's part of the infrastructure of Hydro, then they would...
They'd mow it.
I'm just wondering if they could, if they consider that a town park of property, if they would once in a while be able to send one of their policemen up there? I mean, we can't get...
This was discussed again back in 2006 as well, and it has been discussed throughout.
Yeah?
Yeah.
They wouldn't, no?
Parked police have been down there enough with the rioters.
Yeah, so I was going to say, I was going to say, sorry, no, it's not...
I think you're, I missed that. The parker police, that they didn't recover, because it's in the different gallon to the town.
We can't get ours, anybody to go away the heck up there just because it's way up there.
But they've been called a number of times, and last year they didn't show up. The state police, but it's in their records.
The state police, yeah? Really?
They didn't show up.
Oh, they didn't?
No, they don't.
Don't make it up here very often.
Well, we need to discuss with the association, because we do have to meet them every year, so.
I think it'd be great if you all would have, sort of follow through on this discussion with your group and see how we can help. We're not going to solve this, not right now.
I think it would be easy to solve it just by saying, "It's a public road", it always has been, and it provides access to the water, which is a really spectacular natural resource, and it's unfortunate that there's only this one little piece where people can get at it, but that's the way it is, and it could, if, it could allow all kinds of management tools and gates and things like that, like you're doing now, we could do it under a pent road, pent road rule. That's my opinion, but...
So just to be clear, in 1998, when the select board made a private road, is that void, is that up the window?
I don't see any evidence of it.
Well, they put the sign.
What?
The town put the sign, the PBT.
Yeah, the sign, yeah, but that's, there's a whole process for...
They would have to discontinue the road or, you know, establish a private road, and that would have been a very formal process, and there would be plenty of paperwork about that that happens.
Would the same paperwork be there for building the road or designated it?
Well, it's like the 1915 paperwork that our town clerk found. That was a formal process, and it's the same, 100 and plus years later, it's the same process.
Yeah, petition, and the site is in it, and the...
Laying out the road.
Laying out the road and all that, it's the same. So if you wanted to, if people want to, like, upgrade from a class four to a class three, there's a, there's a process for that. Downgrade from a class three to a class four, there's a process for that, and...
It's pretty much the same process.
Some of it, the written evidence, is that it's a town road.
I mean, it's been on the state maps for...
I've seen a herd, they say, yeah, they, they can just pick a road. They can just pick that road, oh, that's a public road.
I don't know how, how the state goes about putting things on the maps. Sometimes...
Usually it's material maps, the way it looks.
Well, today, but not in 19, you know, 69.
They were surveyed roads, it's, they were surveyed roads. That's the basis of it.
And towns do have to communicate, like, we downgraded the road to a trail, and I had to, when I was on the software, I had to inform Utrans about that downgrade, because it's people record how many miles of class four, most 30 class two roads that each town has. So there is communication between the town and the state that was designated on the state maps. And I agree, the state maps are not completely correct from the old 1915 map that's there. It has the driveway down to the old Wright's Camp as a town road too, and that's...
That's incorrect, yeah.
I mean, I'm sorry, I had another meeting, but I had to, yeah, but I probably will come out and get this one too.
And Michael, the gates, you mean, you heard any reactions to the gates on top of the road or...
No, I haven't heard anything at all, and as far as the summer goes, it seemed to be open all the time. I mean, the issue for me personally, I know you probably all talked about this and are ready to go home, but is the, what happens on the dam? We have a town road that ends on private property, and I know that the who owns the property has been a long, they also... But at 2:00 in the morning, when people are roaring and downloading their trucks or booming their truck radio, it affects everybody on the pond, and there seems to be no way to, for that landowner to enforce the behavior that happens on their property. And, you know, that's the thing that bugs me. I am pretty much convinced that it's a town road, just from everything that's in there in that 1915, the select board minutes, the map, the discontinuing of the old road that, that used to be the road down to the, actually, I think that road used to go to the community that lived below the dam, but there wasn't a dam there. Farm, I believe.
There was a farm.
Yeah, there was something out there.
There was a farm.
My issue is trying to change the behavior on the dam for the people, the property owners that around the pond, that have to put up with that kind of behavior. And, you know, I live all over, my camp is way across the road. I don't have to deal with the trucks coming up and down, but I do have to listen to it all. And I'm, if I were right on the road or the camp right next to the dam, you know, that would be unacceptable to me. It wouldn't happen at the park, natural pond, it wouldn't happen in any of our fishing accesses. That stuff was going on, somebody would do something about it, but nobody seems to be able to do anything about what happens.
So I don't know, you think it's been a private road since 1978? 1998, did you say? Anyway, but things haven't changed as far as partying. I don't know if public or private would change that.
It was a negotiating tool when you're down to talking, you'd have to give them to close the road.
Yeah, the alternative, maybe you close the property, which is next to it. I mean, that's, if there, if we have, we don't have access for the opportunity to close the actual road, our next step is to close the property, which prevents people from accessing.
You mean permanently?
Over time, we need to close it to, to, to correct the problem. Because if you, if you, if you don't have the leverage to close something, then, then the misuse of the public will never...
You could have the leverage to close it through a pent road.
Well, we have, we have the leverage to close the property, to post the property. So, and we haven't done that, but that would be our leverage to...
What do you mean, to close at the property line, you mean, down there?
If we, if we go with this map and this philosophy, this right away gets you on old actual property to a point, which is the old granite, which is actually Kurt Morris' property, that could be gate, which then there's no public, then you'd have to go over private land to get to the, to the dam. Which is not the intent, but that's, if you want it, if you have to have it as a private landowner, leverage to be able to stop something from happening, you need the ability to post the property.
Yeah, well, you still could, I guess you still could do that if it was a public road.
It's not, Diana, it's not keeping them away from the water, it's the safety issue of...
It's a safety issue.
And the disturbance and the destruction of private property that is really the root of this.
And ongoing.
Yeah, I know, and it's, I know it's a problem, it has been...
There's nothing anybody seems willing to do about it, or nothing that, you know, the property owners are capable to do anything about it. People that, the Kurt Laura, who you just mentioned, have gone and asked people to leave, there is, there are posted times there, and they just tell her, you know what, and threaten them, and they just stop doing that. Or trying to deal with people that are outrageously drunk, you know, it's kind of intimidating.
But public or private, what's the difference?
Everybody just has to sit there and suffer through it.
Look, if you're managing to break sign, if you're living, or at the beginning, then is there a reach to help? But then you have to counter...
Right.
Create counter.
And, you know, as a private owner, the recourse is to call the state police, and they don't come, you know? If Harder Electric somehow is involved, you know, maybe the Harder police will come.
Hasn't been successful yet.
No. And they've almost told people in Woodbury, well, you know, that is in Woodbury, it's on Harder American Road.
Is there any private security around?
Oh, goodness gracious.
No, we're trying to counter.
Sure.
But these are landing rules before, maybe.
Okay, all right, all right, all right, we're on public record. Well, it is now a quarter after 7:00, this meeting was going to adjourn at 7:00 PM. I would take any final thoughts that we can put into record. I don't think that we're going to solve this at this moment, but what would be great, when is the next meeting of your...
Yeah, it's not determined yet.
I would, whenever Kurt runs a show, Kurt, we're probably a good idea, but it's not there. We could try that one earlier.
If it's possible for you all to have that meeting and rope us in, I think we would like to be involved.
Yeah, I think, it's good idea.
And then we can continue this discussion. I don't think that we're solving it at this moment, but we have a lot of good information as to how we need to move forward.
Yeah, I mean, you could take the plan of formally trying to get the town to throw up the road, but, yeah, that's a kind of a problem, would have some problems there, but, I mean, it's a process, and the public has a right to intervene in that. But if you're not willing to admit that it's a town road now...
I'm sorry to be here, but...
Thank you all. Any final comments from anyone? Thank you all for being here, we appreciate the time, really, really do. All right, so, at 7:17, I'd like to adjourn the special meeting of the Woodbury Select Board in association with Nichols Pond Dam Road Access. Thank you for being here.